All right. Welcome, everyone, to this virtual town hall meeting. I'm coming for you live from in Melbourne's West. I'm joined here by Dr Nick Drymforth at the National Centre for Strands Studies at Monash University and a former adviser to our august leader of the Labor Party, Bill Shorten. Thanks for coming, Nick. Joining us from Canberra is the member for Fraser and all about Labor economic data Assistant Treasurer, Dr Andrew Lee. Can you hear us, Canberra?
Yes, we can.
Great to see you all. I hear the weather is... Yes, okay. So also joining us tonight as special guests, we have the Australian Labor Party's National President Jenny McAllister. Hi Jenny. The Australian Fabian Society's Tim Sonnerick. Hi, Tim.
Hey, folks.
Per capita Research Fellow Emily Mullein.
G'day.
Victorian Young Labor President Jessie Oberden-Skinner.
Hi, thanks for promoting me.
Put the Young Labor thing behind you a bit.
As some executive.
The Chippewa Research Centre's Executive Officer Jane Austen.
Hello.
Hello, Jane. And we also have joining us but not on the screen at the moment, Tim Lyons, Assistant Secretary of the ACTU, Jane Garrett, Victorian President of the Labor Party, and Claire O'Neill, the Member for Hawtham. They may pop on the screen later, but they are watching as we speak. So, the premise of tonight is to promote new ways for Labor Party members and supporters to engage with the party. So, and Nick Drymforth and Andrew Lee both made, I think, quite substantial contributions to, you know, the philosophical direction of the Labor Party recently. And upon reading Nick's piece talking about Blue Labor and communitarianism recently, I thought there were some interesting tensions and interesting conflicts between Nick's approach and Andrew Lee's approach, he'd been articulating last year about liberalism in the Labor Party. So I thought, let's get us all in a room, they can make their spiel, and the, not the television viewing audience, but the online viewing audience, you know, you feel like you want to say the cyber branch members at this point, but I'd probably lose every sentient member of the online community for saying that, to ask questions as we go. So we will be able to see on our screen questions pop up from viewers watching via YouTube. So, on that note, the structure for today is, I'm going to ask Nick to begin with a bit of a spiel about his premise, we'll hand over to Andrew Lee, and we'll invite some questions from our august square talking head boxers on the screen, and then we will throw to questions from both the audience and from online. We're already getting questions online, it's fantastic. All right, Nick, I'll hand over to you. Oh, we'll time you, so.
Okay. Give me a second, I'll go over. Thanks, Tim, this is a terrific initiative, and thank you too for Andrew for agreeing to the debate. I have to say from the outset, it's a little bit ironic that I'm taking the communitarian side against someone who was once a researcher for one of the communitarian gurus in the United States, wherever put them, but such is life. Now, ordinarily, I'd begin such a debate with an ode to a Labor hero, I think, or politician. I've been Chippewa, or my personal hero, John Curtin, or one of the Latter Day Saints, Gothic Goths, Bob or Paul. But tonight I want to do something a little bit different, and I want to start with a quote from a famous thinker, from my faith tradition. His name is Rabbi Hillel, some of you may have heard of him, he's a contemporary of Jesus of Nazareth. He's famous for saying what we call a tractate in the Talmud, "If I am not for myself, who will be for me? When I am for myself, what am I?" Now, this is my creative interpretation, but in other words, Hillel was advocating communitarianism two millennia before the academic world took hold of the concept in the 1990s, or it's digged in that horrible word triangulation, one of the strategies of Clinton, Blair, and even Obama. It's a view, simply put, about how we best flourish as human beings, distinctive human beings, by being rooted in strong relationships with a family, community, and, dare I say, cohesive nations. Now, this snippet of wisdom, I think, contains a really powerful but simple lesson for our party, as indeed the essence of Labor politics should be simple. What is that essence? The good life. It's about enabling the majority of our citizens to lead long, fulfilling lives rich in meaning. It's what our party was put on this earth to do. It's not rocket science, but I think re-engaging with that core purpose means doing some really hard thinking about where we've been and where we're going. So what I want to do tonight is not to argue that communitarianism should become our sole ideology, and nor am I suggesting that we ditch our commitment to elements of liberalism. Rather, what I want to suggest is that we need to draw upon all the rich traditions of our movement, communitarianism included. I think that means beginning with what I call Labor's 1066 moment. To borrow Fraser Morris Glasman, a British Labor thinker I'll talk about a little later, Hawke Labor, elected 1983, has become the platonic ideal of what a reformist Labor government is. This 1983 and all that view of our history, and I think it applies to extent to Whitlam and Keating, is a repressive force, I would argue, on our party in two ways. One, it means that the party struggles to live up to the lofty standards of that government, and also blocks the way for renewing our vision. Let me be really clear, those governments changed Australia for the better. We are wealthier, we are more open, we are more dynamic because of them. But 1983 is no longer a useful guide to our world, and also that era, I think we need to admit, had negative effects. I could talk about the effects of our party's structure, our reliance upon a messianic leader, so to speak, our relationship with acute community or lack thereof, but what I really want to do is focus on its effect on our governing philosophy. Put simply, modern Labor, under the influence of what I would call status liberalism, has placed far too much faith in the ability of centralized governments or free markets to solve our society's problems. I think the stress, too, on Hawke Labor's economic achievements obscures other magnificent feats during that era. For example, when the AIDS crisis hit Australia during the 1980s, there were calls for the isolation of those with the disease, or worse. Led by Labor Health Minister Neil Blurt, public information campaigns targeted the areas where gay men lived and socialized, and it was the community, rather than markets or the state, which spread a message of mutual responsibility. AIDS was brought under control, and the Hawke Labor government became a role model globally. Yet I would ask, how many people would recognize that as an epic Hawke Labor legacy? Too few, in my opinion. So, apart from getting you to rethink some of the achievements of this era, I'm suggesting that the way forward also requires us to rediscover Labor's lost traditions. In my opinion, the much-belied craft unionists of the 19th century are a good start. They sought to improve their lot in life without exclusive reference to the state. Wages were all important, but the unions they formed from workplaces of printers, bakers, carpenters, and others aimed at so much more. This was a time when there was no welfare state, and these unions acted as benefit societies. They provided workers and their families with a form of insurance. They promoted dignity and self-respect, they fostered trust and obligation amongst their members. Importantly, they wanted to conserve as much as they hoped to change, namely, they wanted to preserve the so-called working man's paradise of high wages and social mobility. Now, this was also suggested by the Labor Defence Committee in the wake of the disastrous maritime strike of 1890. Only by finally a Labor Party, they announced, could we begin to restore the people to the land of which they had been plundered, to absorb the monopolies which the society at large has tended to create, and this is the important bit, and to ensure to every man, excuse the non-Juda neutral language, to ensure to every man, by the opportunity of fairly renominated Labor, a share in those things that make life worth living. You know, the influence, too, of English ethical socialism, and that socialism's a dirty word these days, it really amounts to what we'd call modern communitarianism. It's another really important lost tradition. Writing in 1909, for instance, Labor MP and Union Leader William Spence argued that Labor's focus was the bread and butter question, but he maintained there was also dominated by two moral convictions, the ethic of usefulness and the ethic of fellowship. With Labor governments in office, Spence envisaged an active and enlightened democracy. Shorter working hours and better wages for Spence were not ends in of themselves, but would allow citizens to participate in family and community life, voluntary organizations, and participate in political debate. Spence, like so many of his comrades, wanted to create a good life for all based upon an ethical and a moral understanding that markets needed regulation, but the governments could not solve every ill. I think, you know, there's a wider intellectual vibrancy of early Labor politics which is ripe for rediscovery. How many of you here would know that early Labor included a few anarchists?
Still does.
That the single tax movement, which came from the United States, influenced William Spence, whose own socialism owed as much to Marx as it did to Methodism. Liberalism, too, or more accurately, social liberalism, is a really important part of the Labor tradition, as Andrew suggests. But I think he is wrong, however, to argue that it is our future. Largely speaking, we are a smaller Liberal Party, and any further move in that direction, I think, is a dead-end trajectory. With the greatest respect, I think liberalism has a huge blind spot, which folks like Spence recognized. It can't get its head around the individual and the collective, and I don't think it conceptualizes that democratic, self-governing voluntary institutions such as unions can constrain the power of the market and the state, strengthening both liberty and society. But this is where I think communitarianism comes into play, has so much to offer our party, and I think we can draw specifically on its latest incarnation, Morris Glasman's British Blue Labor movement. It arose, of course, out of the 2010 general election defeat, and was in part a response to Prime Minister, the Tory Prime Minister Cameron's big society vision. So, to summarise Morris's ideas in a nutshell, he's highly critical of free market globalization, but also what he calls progressive statism. And he wants British Labor to re-embrace a small-c conservative form of what he calls socialism, or radical conservatism. It's one which, he says, places family, faith, and work at the heart of a new politics of reciprocity, mutuality, and solidarity. And so for Morris, Labor politics is above all about resisting the tendency of the state and the market to treat people and the environment as commodities. He is a good communitarian, believes that individuals flourish best when their lives are given meaning beyond markets, or being told what to do by government, and are stead rooted in voluntary institutions, again, such as unions, but also faith-based organizations. And there's a lovely quote from Morris, which I'll read to you. "Life," he insists, "is about the people that you love and not about ends and ideals", one such being liberalism. And Morris goes on to advocate a new relationship-based, democratized political economy for Labor to put in place, and it's one inspired by German social market ideas, such as employee representation on company boards, but work councils, regional banking, and a host of other moves. So what might Blue Labor have to offer Australian Labor, you might ask? I think it provides a really brilliant opportunity to rethink our status liberalism. Now, I'm not arguing that the market economy needs to be superseded, far from it. I actually think, and it's heretical in some aspects of our party, that there is scope for certain state-owned enterprises to be placed into privately-owned hands, but only when paired with social market-style mechanisms. Then, of course, there's Glasman's beautiful idea, simple idea, that the reason Labor was put on this earth was to gain power in order to redistribute wealth and power, not to expand the state and government activities to redistribute wealth without power. It's all about power. And here, it's my contention that this destruction of this overly status form of Labor politics can actually help rebuild public trust in social democratic institutions, but also from a practical perspective, ease the pressure on Labor to live up to the standards of 1983. There are also a load of specific policy areas in which I think Blue Labor ideas are applicable, and I'm happy to elaborate on them in question time. Welfare is one idea. I'm a supporter of the radical idea that local councils, rather than federal governments, should oversee welfare systems. Then there's the scandal of utility prices. There's the manufacturing crisis, which we were talking about before this debate kicked off. And then there's the crucial challenge of building a 21st-century accord in our workplaces. I think more broadly, these Blue Labor ideas and communitarianism can help Labor rethink how it presents itself to the electorate. As I've been trying to suggest to you, we have never been a straightforward progressive political party, at least by reference to its present meaning. Standing against the commodification of people, and of place, and of the environment is also a conservative idea. Now, for instance, I think on climate change, through the workplace laws today, there is an argument, not just put by myself, but by the great Labor historian, late great Labor historian, Tony Judd, people like the Labor thinker, incumbent current Human Rights Commissioner Tim Suk-Pomasson, that Labor can actually be the party of small-c conservatism, as opposed to the radical coalition, and that's what the coalition really are today, a radical mishmash of hard right-wing politics and wacko libertarianism. Because in the end, a true conservative would insist upon the duty that we owe to future generations, i.e. take action on climate change, but also insist that people are not simply commodities to be bought and sold in some Labor market. Now, there are flaws with British, with Blue Labor thinking, again, I'm happy to discuss some of these in question time, and it's no easy thing to simply translate these ideas to Australia. But I think Blue Labor, and I think communitarianism, is a necessary corrective to the overly managerial, even bureaucratic, evidence-based trajectory of modern social democracy, one that, in my opinion, has been damaged by a bloodless status liberalism. Let me return in conclusion to our friend Rabbi Hillel. The Talmud, which I mentioned before, tells of a non-Juda requesting the good Rabbi to convert him to Judaism. But the man didn't want to go through a lengthy process of learning, so he asked, "I want you to teach me more, I want you to teach me the entire Torah, the Bible, so to speak, while I stand on one foot." Hillel's response was, "Do not do unto others that which you hate done unto yourself. That is the entire Torah, the rest is commentary, go and study it." It's a famous line. But I think it's also a religious reminder of the secular essence and the simple essence of Labor politics and the importance of relationships. If I could suggest an equivalent Labor teaching, it's the aim of the New South Wales Labor Party quoted earlier, to ensure to all a share in those things that make life worth living. I think it's a simple lesson our party needs to relearn, the rest, of course, is commentary. Let's go back and study it. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you, Nick. Plenty of food for thought there. And on that basis, I suppose it's now time for me to hand over to Andrew Lee to tell us about bloodless status liberalism. Is that your rumour, Andrew?
I think that'll be it, yes. Well, thank you very much, Tim, for putting on tonight's event. I want to acknowledge, too, some of the people who've joined us. We've got in this room here former distinguished parliamentarian John Kieran and historian Frank Bonjorno, both of whom, I'm sure, will have things to say. Thanks, too, Nick, for really provocative set of ideas, and thank you to all of those who've joined us, particularly El Presidente Jenny McAllister. Tim, I love this structure for discussing the issues, because a Google Hangout, of course, creates a sense of community here in Fraser and with you in Jellabrand, but it also has a sense of liberty about it as well. Anyone can join in tonight's conversation. I want to begin with the notion that there are three big theories in Australian politics which have basically charted out the broad arc of Australian intellectual history for the last 150 years, and those are conservatism, egalitarianism, and liberalism. Now, I think if we go back to the core moment, if you like, my 1066 moment, it's 1909, that point at which the Liberals in Australian politics are wondering whether they will go with the egalitarians or the conservatives. Labor's always been a party of egalitarianism. I wouldn't want that missed by anyone in this. I think fundamentally, we are the party that believes that a kid who grows up in Cape York should be able to become a High Court Justice, that the health care given to a boss ought to be no better than the health care given to a worker, and that people are entitled to a fair day's pay for a fair day's work. No one's really challenging us for egalitarianism. You don't see anyone, apart from Labor people, standing up in Parliament claiming egalitarianism. But 1909 is the point at which the small-L Liberals team up with the Conservatives in a marriage which in some ways could have gone the opposite direction. In Britain, it's the Liberals end up going much more towards Labor after the dissolution of the British Liberal Party around World War I. Those voters mostly go to the Labor Party. But we lose small-L Liberals for a couple of generations. Now I think it's time to claim them back. Small-L liberalism is, for me, two distinct sets of ideas. The first is a set of ideas around personal liberties. I don't think it's any accident that it was Labor that brought in the Sex Discrimination Act, but it was Labor that brought in the Racial Discrimination Act. And in fact, just about every Labor First speech contains a story about a migrant who came to Australia. And I don't think it's any accident that it took a Labor government to take out the explicit discrimination against same-sex couples from the Australian statute books, and it's overwhelmingly Labor that is arguing for same-sex marriage, an argument I think best put in small-L liberal terms, though you can make other arguments. But I think increasingly now, we're also a party of market liberalism. The competition laws that we have are largely the product of Goff-Whitlock putting in place the Trade Practices Act. The tariff cuts, that idea that Australian business performs best when it's engaged with the world, lay up and under Whitlock, and then under Hawke and Keating. Fraser and Howard do very little in the scheme of things. And we aren't driven by markets, we don't want a market society, but we do recognize the power of markets to tackle things like desalination in the Murray-Darling Basin. It was Labor that pushed for smart, market-based approaches. And climate change, where it was Labor who said that if you want the most effective and efficient approach to tackling climate change, it ought to be through a market. We don't want to be servants to these markets, we don't want to think that there's everything to be gained in extending individual liberties. But I think there's a lot in that tradition we can claim, particularly now as I think the Conservatives are becoming a capital-C conservative party. My argument would have been much weaker under a Liberal Party led by Malcolm Turnbull than it is with now our first-ever DLP Prime Minister. I think Tony Abbott is giving us a unique opportunity to claim the mantle of small-L liberalism. Not at the expense of egalitarianism, we will always be a party of egalitarianism. But those two streams that drifted apart in 1909, I think it's time to bring them back together, to allow those two streams to work, and to recognize the value in social liberalism sitting alongside egalitarianism. My last word goes to Lenin, not John Lennon, Vladimir Lenin, who in 1913 shook his head and said, "Why is it that when I look to Australia, the Labor Party isn't a proper socialist party, it's a party of liberalism?", he said with terrible scorn. And I think there was something in it, in the way that a stopped clock is right twice a day. I think Lenin had our party picked, and I don't think it's bad for us to take the mantle of liberalism alongside egalitarianism.
So, now's the fun part. We'll have a bit of a Q and A. The convener of this meeting started the first question, and indulge me if I throw out my Labor hero into this conversation, who I think is vastly underappreciated by modern party members, but I was always a TJ Ryan man. So TJ Ryan was a great Labor Premier in Queensland, born in Victoria, was a federal MP in New South Wales, so every state gets to claim him. But he also significantly led the Queensland Labor Party during the conscription debates, and led the only branch of Labor Party that didn't split during the conscription debates. Which is, I should also add, that TJ Ryan initially ran for Parliament as a deaconite liberal, but saw the light and joined with Spence and the AWU in the Labor Party at the time. So he even straddles that divide. But my question to the both of you is, I believe Labor Party is a movement, it's a big tent movement, we bring together the best of the right against the forces of reaction and privilege in our society. So are your philosophies of the future of Labor Party exclusive? Can you accommodate each other? And what sort of a big tent do you envisage with your philosophy leading the party? Nick, you've given you're in the room with me, do you want to start off?
I can, you know, I love the term "big tent", I think it's for America, right?
We're sharing everything tonight.
I mean, that in essence is what, you know, this communitarian vision is all about. It's opening up a big space, it's not just, it's about, you know, appealing to people at their core, appeal to people whether they're working class, whether they're middle class, whether they see themselves as progressive, left-wingers, and anywhere in between. It's about appealing to their basic human needs and aspirations, and I think that's the beauty of some of the ideas around Blue Labor, some of the ideas around communitarianism. And if I'm going to be provocative, I think one of the most important things that can be taken from Blue Labor is reconnecting with Labor's base, reconnecting with Labor's working-class base, because I think we have lost connection with those people. I don't get into the whole character tour of socially conservative working-class battlers being pitched against, you know, middle-class progressive elites who live in the city and drink lattes. But to an extent, you know, there is an element of truth to the character tour. You know, I'll say something unpopular, I don't want more people like me joining up as members of the ALP. I don't come from a straightforwardly middle-class background, but there's no doubt that I'm now a paid-up member of the inner-city middle class. I don't think the party needs more people like me in its branches or in Parliament. And I think the beauty of Blue Labor is its broad-based appeal to a wide variety of people, but especially people who work for a living, and all they have to sell is their labor.
Can these philosophies be reconciled? Andrew, can these philosophies be reconciled?
Tim, by coincidence, I have my Eureka water bottle here tonight. And I think Eureka is one of those great legends that in some sense does span much of what we're saying tonight. Eureka has an egalitarian sense about it, a sense of those who, as Nick just said, have nothing to sell but their labor, wanting a fair deal. And it's got a small L Liberal sense about it, that no one should be unfairly taxed, and a communitarian sense about it, bringing together so many different nationalities under a common cause. One of the things I really do like about Blue Labor is its stories and its traditions. The notion that we as a Labor Party need to not only talk about what we want to change, but also what we want to preserve. And the long arc of history needs to reach back as well as reaching forward. John Crutus, one of the stars of Blue Labor, has a very moving rift on the paupers' grave, and how one of the great terrors of working people in Britain at the end of the 19th century was that when they died, they would be thrown into the hole, in an unmarked hole in the ground with everybody else who passed away on that day. And a simple Labor payment allowed families to be able to have their loved ones buried in a hole of their own marked place. It's a simple story, but it's a very powerful one. And we need to be better at telling those stories of the past. And that's the bit that I take from Blue Labor, as I try to reconcile it with the egalitarian liberal vision that I have for the Labor Party going forwards.
Excellent. On that note, I think we might take some questions from our floating boxes on the screen here. If we're talking about the long arc of history, I think that can only be timed to hear from Australian Fabians and Tim Sorek, who is the only one of us rocking the headset I can see. So...
I'm old school and new school all at the same time. Look, we've talked a lot about the Labor Party being a big tent, and the Fabians are a very big tent, so I'm not going to be critical of that idea on principle. But I'm going to try Tim's question kind of inside-out for a second. The utility of political philosophy is the extent to which it can help you make decisions about what you think is right and wrong. And we've had both Nick and Andrew kind of go to great lengths to tell us how the Labor Party can accommodate both of their sort of philosophical positions. And obviously, to some extent, that's true. But what I'd really like to hear from them is where they think the real kind of rubber-hits-the-road moment is, what are some issues where we do have to make a hard choice between one of those traditions and which way we should go on that?
Okay, we might go to Andrew first on that one.
I think it's a terrific question there, Tim. And perhaps one way of thinking about it is the story that we tell about where the jobs of the future will come from. I do think that our story about the jobs of the future must be a story which talks about the benefits of being engaged with the Asian region rather than the risks. Australia has a fortress Australia history for much of its past, where we kept out imports and kept out migrants. But I think our future is very much in the area of openness, and being open to trade, to ideas, and welcoming into our ranks those who want to set up new businesses. I think ours is the natural party of venture capitalists and entrepreneurs, even although they mightn't have been part of it 50 years ago.
Okay, Nick?
Thank you. I'm glad to take the first question from the Fabians, because Maurice Glasman, the guru of Blue Labor, has sometimes an uneasy relationship with the Fabian. He tells the story of meeting Sundar Kabala, the then-head of the Fabians, to discuss some of his views on immigration a number of years ago. And they sat down, Glasman and John Crutus, who Andrew Lee mentioned, and John Crutus said to Sundar, "What's your problem?" And Sundar said, "Immigration." And Sundar said, "What's your problem with us?" And John Crutus said, "Eugenics and Stalinism." But the relationship has recovered since. And I think Maurice is now the leading speaker on the Fabian circuit. And I do congratulate the Fabians for being that big tent body where people can come together, even if they don't agree with each other, they can talk about things. To your question, I don't think, I think the hot-button issue at the moment in Australian politics is manufacturing and the future of manufacturing. And I think the Blue Labor, and I think the communitarianism, has so much to offer to this debate. We need a new political economy. I don't think it's good enough for anyone in politics, let alone people from the Labor side of politics, to throw their hands up in despair and say, "There's nothing that we can do." There is plenty that we can do. We need a workforce that is engaged in high-tech manufacturing, which is highly skilled, which is highly paid, which actually makes things, which makes things which people need, rather than being checkout chicks and boys for Woolworths and Coles. And here, if you're looking towards the Blue Labor tradition, the Blue Labor tradition looks very strongly towards the German social market economy. And it's not airy-fairy philosophy. The German social market economy works. It works by bringing together workers, and unions, and business, and government. It means introducing radical new ideas to Australian political economy, you know, such as worker representatives on company boards, so that men and women don't find out, read in Harold's son, that they're out of a job, that they're no longer able to put food on the table or to pay their mortgage. We're talking about things like work councils. And really critically, I think we're talking about a massive expansion in vocational education, which is clearly linked to people's entry into the Labor force. They're just some of the things which I think Blue Labor and, I guess, the German economic miracle, so to speak, has to offer Australia right now.
Well, manufacturing jobs and entering into the workforce, it seems like quite an appropriate segue to go to Tim Lyons, who is here in, it's like you're from the office, Tim.
I am, Tim.
Yeah, it is a pure coincidence that the first three questions have come from Tim's. This is not a Tim-led conspiracy.
Well, strangely enough, actually, Tim, in one sense, asked part of the question I was going to ask, but I'll persist anyway. I did want to say, Tim, I think this is a terrific thing to have done. And Andrew's line about Lennon reminded me that recently online, somebody well to the left of our party remarked to me that Lennon had you lot dead right, you are a movement of liberal bourgeois reaction. So that particular epithet is still thrown collectively at us as a party and as an organized Labor. I wanted to go a little bit deeper with both of you about the question that Tim just asked you. And that is, what is something that the particular tradition that you are agitating for tonight can bring to one of three particular public policy problems that I think we need to wrestle with as a society and as a party? And I don't mind which one you do, but I think they're all important, and we could go different ways with them. And the ones that I'd like to suggest to you, I was going to say tax, but I think that would be unfair to Nick in favor of Andrew. But if you could address one of what you think the tradition you're contending for would bring to either primary healthcare, the question of support for people who are unemployed, or the question of the delivery, effective delivery of childcare services. Because I think they're the traditional and forward-looking elements of a program that we've got traditional social democratic responses to in some cases, but I'm not quite sure we've got the ones for the future. And where do you think your ideas would take our party and our movement on those issues, or one of those issues?
Well, the rubber really hitting the road there. Nick, what have you got to offer?
I'm actually glad you asked that question. And I won't deal with each of the three policy issues separately, but suffice to say, you know, I think this Blue Labor thinking with its, you know, very skeptical attitude towards both the ability of a centralized, highly bureaucratic state to oversee service delivery. But on the other hand, you know, its deep skepticism about the ability of markets to fill services which serve basic human needs. Again, I think it's beautifully tailored towards, you know, addressing those kind of concerns. And the key really here is harnessing local expertise and shifting, you know, it would be quite a radical shift, and I think it's uncomfortable for some people, but shifting to a radically new method of local service delivery. It's not about suggesting that we need to spend less money. It's not about suggesting that we get federal government out of some of those areas. But it's suggesting that if we draw on local expertise and knowledge, where there's a relationship of trust, I really want to hammer that word, "relationship." One of the problems with the welfare state as it stands is people are skeptical about its ability to deliver. They're not trustworthy. So I think if we can pull those services back to a local level, you know, with the assistance of state and federal governments, I think we can get much more bang for their buck. And as I mentioned in my talk, I think if we can make those things work better for ordinary people, if we can make, if we get them to see that the government, that activist interventionist government can work in their benefit, you know, I think that we're well on the road to rebuilding trust in all institutions we love, the social democratic institutions.
Okay. Andrew, do you want to build on that?
Tim, I'm fascinated by the three issues you've picked. I would focus on primary healthcare. The big challenge here is that Australia has far more people in hospital per head than the typical developed country. And that indicates we're not doing primary healthcare particularly well. I think there's a bit of a market answer to that, and that informed our government's thinking around Medicare Locals, which was that you want to create incentives for groups of primary healthcare providers to keep people well. And the more that you can place the responsibility for wellness back onto a group of primary healthcare providers, the more you can do to keep people out of hospital. And for me as an economist, I just think of that as getting the incentives right keeps people healthier and ends up saving the taxpayer.
Excellent. It might be an appropriate time to free ourselves of this Tim spiral and seek a question from one of our other talking heads. Now, Emily Mullein has a lot of expertise in aged care policy and aging policy. Maybe this conversation's triggered something with her. Emily, do you have anything you want to inject?
Yeah, what I actually wanted to ask is slightly different, or completely different to that. Nick, I spent some time prior to my days at Per Capita over in London with the good people of Demos, at the same time that Tim was there. And I was working on the Progressive Conservatism Project, which was around the time that Cameron launched the Big Society. And a lot of this language around devolving power to local communities, having local collectives make decisions about use of goods and services, and indeed notions around faith as well, and patriotism, all have very strong echoes of progressive conservatism to me. And I wonder whether, as a result of that, there's a risk that, albeit by different philosophical means, we end up at the same end as progressive conservatism. And so the right can easily say, "Well, they've got there by different means, but we're advocating the same thing."
I think it's a really good point. I mean, there's a huge overlap between what Maurice Glasman and John Crutus are doing in Labor Party and progressive circles, and the work of, you know, people like Philip Long. Don't get me wrong. But I think David Cameron's Big Society has been exposed for the sham that it is. It was rhetoric. They don't really believe in it. They don't, the Tories and even the Liberal Democrats, not only do not believe in it, they don't have the kind of organic links which our great Labor movement has for voluntary associations, most importantly, unions. But if you go and look at the work that people like Maurice Glasman are doing, you know, there are links there now, and the unions are working on this as we speak, between faith-based communities. I think one of the great insights which they've learned over the last few years in terms of union organizing is, strangely enough, it might make sense to go to someone's workplace to try and organize them. But for many migrant workers, in particular for many female migrant workers, that's actually counterintuitive. When they say union organizer go into a workplace, sometimes that brings out an element of fear and mistrust. But if you engage with them on their home turf, whether it's in faith-based communities or wherever it might be, you're starting a conversation from a much better basis. So, I mean, I think it's a difference between practice and theory. And I think that Blue Labor people, and I think Australian Labor people, are in a terrific spot to actually, you know, take this rhetoric, take this philosophy, and actually apply it to the real world. Because we do it day in, day out. We've done it, and we can do it again.
That question was largely directed at Nick. Andrew, is there anything you want to add to that?
No, I think we should get more questions. Thanks, Tim.
Excellent. All right. On to more questions. Let's go to Jane Austen at the Tipler Research Centre. Jane, what has tonight said to you?
Look, I would really like to talk about some of the deeper issues in our society, a few of which are around the entrenched disadvantage that we see in gender, race relations. We see it going on with asylum seekers. We see it going on in workplaces with pay equality. These are issues that are entrenched and need more than one single policy solution. The last two terms of Labor government did a lot of great things in terms of law reform in these areas, but that entrenched disadvantage is still there in Indigenous communities in the North, in workplaces around Australia. And I want to pose to Andrew first, how an ideology like liberalism could tackle something that is just so deeply entrenched in our society.
Andrew?
So my general philosophy on social policy in particular is that we ought to be optimistic and passionate about the goals we're trying to achieve, but pretty modest and skeptical about the ability of any particular program to achieve those ends. If it were the case that we had the answers to closing all of the Indigenous gaps, then they wouldn't be the yawning chasms that they are today. So I'd like to see us doing more rigorous experimentation in very much the spirit of FDR in the Great Depression. Bold, persistent experimentation, expecting much of what we do to fail, and not attaching ourselves too much to particular programs. I don't know, for example, whether the best way of boosting Indigenous school attendance is to spend money on truancy offices or to provide $20 a day to attend school. But I do know how I could design a policy experiment that would tell you which one worked better.
Okay, Nick?
That's a great question. There's so much there to try and deal with. Again, I think from a philosophical position, I think the emphasis, you know, in what I'm talking about is getting beyond, you know, what I perhaps rudely call that bloodless status liberalism, you know, the focus on government trying to dissolve all or leaving it to the market. But more importantly, you know, trying to solve these issues by revitalizing the very political language that language that we use. And I don't think it can just be a language of rights, I think it needs to be a language of rights and responsibilities. Now, I know that some people in this room will think that's a very right-wing or conservative or big C conservative idea, but it's not. It comes deeply in the bowels of our progressive movement, and it gets toward the core point of Blue Labor and communitarian thinking, and how you appeal to the public to take these issues seriously, is the politics is not just about the head, it's about what's in here. And we need a new language, and we need to go back to the language we were once comfortable with, which was a radical language, a romantic language, that said that we could take on these issues, and to use some perhaps dreamy idealistic language, change the world. To pick up one issue that you talked about, asylum seekers, I'm shaking my head again this week, as I know probably many people in the room are. It is a vexed, complex issue. I learnt this working as a political staffer over the course of 2013. But I think where the Labor Party needs to come from in all of this is, yes, we don't want people to be drowning on leaky boats out on sea, but I think we need to take a step back. And it's a lesson which should apply to the economy, to climate change, and to every issue under the sun, many of which Jane mentioned, is that there has to be an ethical and moral base which underpins our approach to all public policy issues. And at the moment, I can't see much of a moral or ethical approach to the events which are happening on P and G.
On that note, if you want to go upstairs to the top, this might be an opportune time to take one of the online questions. This is a question from, what's the name there? Verkman? It says, "I'm a member of the Labor Party and I've spent most of today, I'm a member of the Labor Party and I've spent most of today questioning my faith in the progressive movement over the fact that we are happy to let refugees be killed and beaten up under our care. What can we do to restore the moral compass of Labor?" Nick touched on that in his answer there, I think that was exactly what you were talking about. Andrew, is there anything you want to add on that point? I've heard you speak quite attentively on this topic before.
I was hoping you were going to throw that question to Jenny McAllister, actually, Tim. It is incredibly tough watching these events, and I guess my feeling on the whole asylum seeker debate is that we're never going to be able to outtough the Conservatives, and that what we do and how we talk about what we do should always be through the frame of compassion. What we did in the last term of government was to pursue a set of policies which we hoped would stop people drowning at sea. That awful spectre of 1 in 20 people who tried to get to Australia drowning at sea. But doing so required some tough policies, and I don't want to pretend that I've looked at the events at Manus Island with anything other than shock and a sense of horror at what's going on there.
It's now a note to transition on, but I think Nick was talking about returning to dreamy idealism before, which might make it an appropriate time to bring young Labor in. Jesse Irvine and Skinner, who is a known dreamy idealist.
Very much so.
What do you want to contribute, Jesse?
Look, I think there's been a lot said about reconnecting with the base, and particularly bringing those people into the party. And I think Nick's kind of covered how communitarianism's going to do that. But how do we rebuild a voter base in what's, you know, it's a pretty disconnected public from what we're trying to achieve, particularly from Andrew's perspective, and using social liberalism to really achieve that? How do we cut through and, I guess, rebuild the trust with public as well? Good question.
Funnily enough, I think Andrew may have even written a book called Disconnected, so this might be an appropriate time to throw to Andrew.
I think that we need to make sure that we're telling stories as much as possible, and that we're connecting what we do now with what Labor governments in the past have done. So when I'm standing up in Parliament talking about a minor tweak on competition laws, I do try and tell that story about how before Goff Whitlam, customers got a much worse deal because they didn't have proper consumer protections. But also, I buy that if you look at the three traditions, conservatism and egalitarianism and liberalism, liberalism probably does the worst job of storytelling. Frankly, I'd much rather tell the egalitarian stories, whether they're stories about the redistribution that goes on within AFL, or stories about prisoner of war camps in World War II, and how the Australians shared what they had. Those sort of, that storytelling, I think, is an important way of connecting.
Okay, Nick?
I agree entirely with Andrew's stress on the so-called narrative storytelling, telling people about sometimes just the little things that Labor governments do which change lives, such as in the global financial crisis, when we saved 200,000 jobs, and the myriad of other flow-on effects which came from stimulus package. But I think something else that we really need to do is to be with the people again. I think it's a terrible, terrible cliche, but I think we need to have a really tough, hard conversation with ordinary Australians. Not by push polling, not by focus groups, but by a lot of one-on-one conversations. And I know that the party, particularly here in Victoria and also New South Wales, is big into the moment, into community organising. But if I can add a critical note to that, I don't really see what we're doing as community organising. I see it as mobilising, which is all well and good, but community organising means actually going out and asking people, what do you need? How can we work with you to improve the lives of your families, your communities? And this is really politics 101. It's about having a genuine, honest conversation, and I think as progressives, when we have those conversations, we're going to have to be prepared to hear some things that we don't necessarily agree with and we don't necessarily like. But that is an integral part of us reconnecting with ordinary Australians, wherever they live, whether it's the inner city, whether it's the suburbs, and crucially, I also think regional Australia, which has been completely sold out by the coalition, and we need to return to.
Okay, well, in the name of going back to the roots and reconnecting, we might do something a little less technologically sexy and ask if there are any questions from people here in the flesh. Does anyone want to be put on the spot and ask a question from Melbourne?
Yeah, please. Mine's about climate change.
Can you hear that on the broadcast?
Yes.
So mine's mainly about climate change. So we've got the market-based system, which is economists, the most efficient in a trading system or a carbon price. Then we have the communitarianism side, but we have to have government intervention because at the moment, the energy system is extremely biased towards fossil fuels. So I want to know from the liberal side and the communitarianism side, how much government intervention do we need and how much should just be market forces?
We'll keep the flow going in the room here. Nick, do you want to?
I mean, I think it has to be a combination of government and market forces. I mean, despite some of what I've said tonight, I don't think it's an either-or choice. I guess one of the other things on climate change which makes me slightly uneasy, even though I think I realise that CPRS, an emissions trading scheme, on the evidence is the most efficient manner, probably cost-efficient manner of producing Australia's carbon emissions. But on the other hand, as I've said, one of the things about communitarian Blue Labor philosophy is that we're deeply uneasy about putting a price on place, putting a price on the environment, and essentially, that's what we're doing. But I mean, I think to an extent, asking about the role of government and asking about the role of market is maybe asking the right, perhaps asking the wrong question. It is going to be a combination of the two, but perhaps more importantly, as I mentioned before, it's about connecting with people's heads and about connecting with people's hearts. That's the way that we're going to win the climate change debate, which we're not winning, if we're to be brutally frank at the moment.
Okay. Andrew, what does the liberalist tradition have to say about climate change?
Well, I think the liberal tradition would point you towards putting a price on carbon because otherwise you end up spending money on things which are tens of times more expensive. So there's ways of getting carbon out of the atmosphere that cost hundreds of dollars a tonne, and there's ways that cost tens of dollars a tonne, or less, just a few dollars a tonne. And you want to do those cheap things first, because then you can do a whole lot more abatement in the long run, and you can do it in a way that doesn't disrupt the economy. And so that gives you the greatest potential of disconnecting growth in the economy from growth in carbon pollution. I think one of the great ironies now is that the market-based approach is being used by the nominally communist Chinese leadership as they set up their emissions trading pilots across the country, covering tens of millions of people. But yet, the nominally free-market liberal national parties want a system that is amazingly intrusive, not to mention ineffective, to deal with climate change. So I think it's a good opportunity for us to tell the story of why Labor has the mantle of smaller liberalism.
Look, on that, Andrew, is there anyone in your company in Canberra that wants to ask? Oh, there's a flood. You used to like to take the consequences.
So my question is to Nick in particular. From what I've read in the UK, a lot of feminists are quite sceptical of the whole Blue Labor movement, particularly because Maurice Glasman, in his discussion of those issues, is often harking back to the 1950s era of Britain, this kind of golden age where everybody lived in very close communities and all that sort of thing. And a lot of feminists observed that a lot of what was great about that era was premised on women not fully participating in the workforce, and premised on unpaid labour by women, and also, in the case of faith-based communities, women not having very empowered positions in their communities. So I wonder if you feel like that is a weakness that Blue Labor needs to address, or if that's just kind of a misunderstanding of what Glasman's talking about?
That's a really good question. I think the answer is both. I think it is a genuine weakness, and it's a weakness which Glasman has tried to address. Not sure whether he completely got it. His argument is that he wants people of whatever gender to be able to live meaningful, rich, long lives, where they're not struggling to make ends meet, where they're not being commoditised in the workforce. But what I would also say is, and I may not have assisted this argument tonight, is Maurice Glasman is not the be-all and end-all of Blue Labor. They're important figures such as John Corrados, but you can take some of the central contention, some of the central arguments of Blue Labor without taking some of what you might see as some of the less savoury aspects, which, I agree, I mean, there are elements of a nostalgia for a 1950s view of Britain, not only which are not applicable to today, but my argument with Maurice is that his view of working class life is probably nostalgic, is at its core nostalgic. It's never been, again, to use that word, a dreamy idealistic world of tight-knit communities. And certainly since World War II, it's never been, so to speak, a white Anglo-Saxon working class, which again is something that Australia can testify to as well.
Okay. Andrew, since there's such a flood in Canberra, do you want to grab another one from Canberra?
Okay. I wanted to ask Nick about a criticism people like Tony Claire and Peter Mandelson have made of Blue Labor, in that while it can answer social policy questions and maybe electoral questions through appealing to community sentiment, anti-immigration perhaps, religious ties and community ties, it ultimately can't answer the central question, which is how to increase economic growth, and through that, people's wages and unemployment. It doesn't really have any answer for how to increase economic growth at all.
I'm not sure I would entirely agree with the premise of that question or statement. As I argued quite clearly before, there's a very strong nodding towards the German social market economy, which, I'm prepared to argue of anyone, has been a standout performer in Europe, if not the world. It's produced a resilient, strong economy with strong rates of economic growth, which has also produced, which has maintained a democratic culture in the workplace and an egalitarian culture. I actually think the biggest challenge for people who are running the Blue Labor line, I think the biggest challenge for the left, for Laborites, for social democrats, for progressives, whatever you call yourself, the biggest challenge now is what do we do with a global system of free markets, the global system of capitalism, which we're struggling to think of ways in which we can, for instance, regulate a national economy? Back when the ALP came of age, the answer was simple, we'll put up the walls. I also don't buy into the argument, which is run by people like Paul Kelly from The Australian and others, that that was one terrible, terrible mistake. But we're negotiating unknown territory here, and I actually think that is the most critical question. I think it's a question where Maurice has made some controversial comments on immigration and the EU, which Britain is very much navigating a very different environment to Australia, but we're all negotiating a different environment where capital is footloose. And how do you build a society based upon mutuality, reciprocity, and solidarity in that environment? I don't agree with the proposition that from Mandelson and co., and I take his views with a pinch of salt, given that the new Laborites presided over the loss of 6 million voters in 13 years.
They did collect a few to begin with.
But I'll leave it at that.
Okay. Andrew?
I've got a question for Andrew, actually, about the conceptualisation of liberalism. Liberalism seems to me, in many ways, to be a very murky term, particularly when you start adding adjectives to it like economic liberalism or neoliberalism, or I'm wondering if you could perhaps talk a bit more about exactly what you mean by liberalism?
So I'm not sure if everyone could hear the question. The question was liberalism's a murky term, how do you define it? And I'm perfectly happy to plead guilty for a little intellectual slippage there. I tend to talk about social liberalism, which encompasses the notions of freedom of association as much as free markets. I think it's important that we see the value of freedoms within liberalism, but I entirely agree that liberalism taken to its extreme ends up as sort of libertarianism. And one of the things that I'm keen to do constantly through this is to emphasise the value of egalitarianism sitting alongside liberalism. Liberalism, if you like... Liberalism, if you like, providing social freedoms and the economic growth engine, but then our egalitarian traditions recognising the market outcome might be the most efficient outcome, but it's probably not the fair, or it's definitely not the fairest outcome. So we need institutions like disability care, Medicare, and good unemployment benefits in order to sit alongside those market outcomes. I think the worst thing that could come out of tonight is if people say, well, I went home, and I listened to one bloke who argued that the Labor Party ought to be a conservative party, and someone else who argued the Labor Party should be a party of liberals, and I reckon I'm having none of the above. Frankly, we're talking about nuances and additions. In some sense, we've got the cake, no one's challenging us for egalitarianism, and we're arguing about the icing.
Just to reiterate Andrew's point, we're on a uni ticket to borrow a line from the charming Christopher Pine. I'm not saying that we should become a conservative party. All I'm asking people is that they recognise that there is a conservative tradition within progressive and labour politics. And I'm very comfortable with acknowledging the strength of the smaller liberal tradition, the social liberal tradition, which Andrew so identifies with. I can see my great mate Frank Bonjono up the back there, and he's written about William Spence and others, and he's rightly suggested these characters, if they had an ideology apart from putting an extra bob in the pocket of union members, it was something called working-class liberalism. And I have no problem with that influencing a broad labour philosophy. My problem is when we simply revert to that as a default position and don't draw upon the really rich, diverse, and even sometimes paradoxical traditions of the ALP.
We wouldn't be the Labour Party without paradox. Any further questions from Melbourne? Oh, sorry, Bernard.
Hi. Bernard at Fitzbeg Ranch. Just wondering, I guess what Jesse was talking about, getting younger people and getting people in, it occurred to me, just listening to everyone tonight, that voters out there especially, just your average people, the people who are supposedly left behind, seem to have rather selective memories. And it just occurred to me that we in Labour aren't very good at talking about what we do for people when we're in government. And it's true, it's home to me when I dealt with a friend in the United States who's had $2 an hour taken off her job in a big grocery wholesaler because of Obamacare.
Yep, yep.
And it was sort of like, don't get me started! And I think I ranted on for about a page and a half to her via email about, you know, we have universal healthcare. It's not perfect, but it certainly wasn't introduced by the Conservatives.
Okay. So for the benefit of people in Canberra who might not have been able to hear Bernard there, the question was essentially that we in the Labor Party have not been good enough at telling the stories about what we have already delivered for Australia and the fair egalitarian nation that we've created, and that in comparison to the US, where they're still having an argument about healthcare and about inching towards universal healthcare, something that Labour delivered and that we ought to be reminding people of. I pointed everyone to the Save Medicare signs in the door as we came in, so it's a topic dear to my heart. Andrew, do you want to kick off on that one?
The great things that Jenny McAllister and the team did for the last Labor Party National Conference was to try and paint, or too successfully, paint that picture of a century and a bit of labour achievements, and reminding us that the reason that the pension is sustainable is because not only did we introduce it in 1909, but then we put a means test on it in the 30s and an assets test on it in the 1980s. And the Conservatives fought us every step of the way, but it means that we have an institution which is one of the best poverty-fighting institutions around. And when we raised the pension by historic amounts in 2009, we cut poverty by a fifth in Australia. Amazing achievement. And telling those long-run stories, I think, really matters. Sometimes as progressives, we're too quick to talk about the next thing, and one thing that the Tories, I think, are very good at is talking about the last thing, or just banging on about the same thing again and again. This PM got to where he is in part because he had the stamina to wear the same colour tie for two solid years. And that's a metaphor for how willing he is to talk about the same thing again and again.
Nick, do we want to be talking about this thing more?
We do, and I know we need to talk about it in better ways. But I want to take an interesting perspective on this topic. I think too often we focus on people like Andrew Lee, as wonderful a communicator and labour warrior on the battlefield of ideas, as wonderful as he is, and as wonderful as my old boss, Bill Shorten, is, he's a terrific communicator. One of the things in placing a reliance on the parliamentary party is that we forget, for most of our 123-year-old history, I should know how old the party has written the last history, one of the things we forget is one of the best ways Labour got its message out, one of the best ways Labour was able to tell people how the party and how parliamentary action was improving the lives of ordinary Australians was ordinary Australians. And in part, it's been the collapse of the party below in branches and in the wider labour movement, in the unions, which has meant that we're not able to communicate our messages as effectively as possible. I get Twitter, I get Facebook, I get the importance of modern mass media, but I'm still a subscriber to... One of the best ways to connect with someone, to communicate with people, to bring them around to your way of thinking, or just to have a conversation with people, is in the places where the ALP used to be embedded, in unions, in faith organisations, churches, et cetera, in town hall politics, in pubs, in sporting groups, in this whole range of voluntary organisations. And this is where I stress, I think we need to re-embed ourselves. I know there's benefits to re-embed the ALP in the community, but I think if we're talking about communication, if we're talking about winning the battle of ideas on a one-on-one basis, that's where we need to be.
Okay. Well, it might be apocryphal, but Oscar Wilde is remembered as saying that the problem with socialism is that it wastes too many evenings. Now, I would not want to have that critique made of either communitarianism or liberalism, so I'm going to take one more question tonight. And I've been saving the best for last. Don't worry, Jenny, I haven't forgotten about you, our august national president. Thank you for your support for this event, Jenny. And do you want to have the honour of having the last question tonight?
Well, yes, although that's quite a lot of pressure, isn't it? I really enjoyed tonight, and maybe one of the things I wanted to say was that in the next few years, Labour's going to have to develop a new national platform. And it's one of the really important things that we do in the period, particularly after an election loss. And I guess one of the things I've been really reflecting on is that there's lots of good policy ideas, but the thing that we really need to strengthen is the narrative and the story that ties all of those policy ideas together. So one of the reasons I was so happy to support tonight is I actually just think bringing through those stories about our traditions, our philosophical beliefs, is actually far more important than the conversation about policy, which is in fact the second-order thing that you do once you've decided what your big philosophical objective is. One thing I wanted to ask both Nick and Andrew is that we talked a lot tonight about class and about economics and about poverty, and these are traditional Australian labour concerns and perhaps labourist concerns. But the real story of the last 30 years is that Australians have become, per capita, extraordinarily wealthy. And notwithstanding that that might be distributed in ways that we're not comfortable with and less equally, we are actually a very wealthy community compared to any time in the past and many communities living today. But in that same period of time, our language, our public language, has become more and more about economics to the exclusion of other values. And I wondered what either of you think about the possibility of Labour introducing different kinds of objectives other than wealth into our national political discourse, and what the traditions that you advocate for might sort of tell us about that or how to do that?
Okay. Andrew, do you want to start with that one?
Well, Jenny, first thing of all, I was just struck by the fact that the painting behind you has crabs on it. It's sort of seemed a wonderful metaphor for a discussion that can only move forward by sort of moving sideways. But it's beautiful. But I think you're right in terms of the way in which we couch the national conversation. I think if voters are after a political party that will keep their taxes down and do the best, fight for cost of living, then on that narrow score, we're going to struggle to be their first choice every time. But I think voters are after something deeper, which is a party that will improve their quality of life, that recognises that traffic congestion is a hideous waste of time that's choking our big cities, that we have to do something about climate change and acting earlier makes more sense than acting later, that if Stephen Conroy had gotten his way, the national broadband network wouldn't have stopped at the building next door, it would have come to this building, and so we'd be able to be better connected to you. And that so many of the issues to do with Australia's future have to do with equality of life discussion. I think that's compatible with egalitarianism and liberalism, and I think you're absolutely right about a conversation that touches something deeper, rather than simply talking about the acquisition of wealth. That's important, it allows us to do many good things, but it's not the be-all and end-all. And can I have a final PS on this, just on party reform? I think both of the traditions we've talked about do have something to say about party reform, and I love Nick's comment about the communitarian rebuilding. I think the contribution from liberalism is that Labour has always been the party that believes that decisions made by larger numbers of people are, on the whole, better than decisions made by small numbers of people. That's why we're in that progressive tradition of removing the requirement of owning land, extending the franchise to women and Indigenous Australians, and always fighting for the opening up of the franchise. And I think that's how we should think about our own party as well.
Nick?
That's a really difficult one, it's something I and others have grappled with over a decade. I mean, I don't think we should walk away from a mantle as good economic mantras, but I think you're right. I think we need to consistently and repetitively tie that task into... What I've been saying is the reason the Labor Party was put on this earth, which is so that people can lead good, long, meaningful lives. And I think sometimes when people dismiss ordinary Australians as overly materialistic, only concerned with hip-pocket nerve issues, sometimes I feel that sells them short. What I think, you mentioned the national platform. I think the most important thing our party can do over the next two and a half years is, again, and I know I'm repeating myself, is to go out there and have a really honest, genuine conversation with Australians. One of the things that British Labour did as part of its quite seismic review, I received by John Crutus, is they, for instance, sat down with quite a few thousand people, not a focus group, just a conversation with people about what was important to them. And you know what they discovered? What was important to people was family life. They cared about their marriages, they cared about their kids, what sort of community they were growing up, what kind of school they were attending. They cared about their parents, they cared about the obligations that they owed to their parents and to the elderly in general. And they cared about the places in which they lived, whether they were safe places, the public amenities that we expect in a first-world country. And I think, and again, they cared about other great traditional labour concerns, which is how you're treated in the workplace, whether you're being well-paid, whether there's good OHHS laws, what kind of jobs you're doing in the first place, really basic human concerns. And what I'm saying is, if we get out there and have that conversation with people, then we can build upon that base in public policy terms. And there's so much work to be done, but I think we need to get back to basics completely and then move on from there.
Okay. Well, on that note, I think we can wrap up, and I'd close by saying that after both Andrew started his contributions on liberalism and Nick more recently on communitarians, blue labour, I emailed him with almost identical emails, saying, "I don't really agree with you, but I'm really happy that you wrote that", because I think that in the Labor Party, we're the party in Australia that wants to change the country, we're the party that wants to make Australia a better place. We don't have the luxury that the Conservatives have of saying, "It's all right as it is, let's preserve privilege as it is". And by wanting to change a country, the obligation on us is to articulate how we need to change it. Because of that, we're never going to stop arguing about the philosophy of the party and what we want the world to look like. That's our burden. In my first speech, I said we're the Promethean Party, we're the bringers of fire of change to a democracy. I took it as read that people would understood that it also meant that it was our burden to suffer, as the burden of the terrorists of these fires. But I'd just take up Jenny's comment and say that I'm a big believer that while we will always have this debate, the process is part of the most important part of this. The process of having these arguments is how we tease out what matters to us. And that's why I was really happy to have Andrew and Nick in the room today, teasing out the two different emphases that they have. We might be doing this in a bit of a more high-tech, fancy way than the AW shearers were doing under the Tree of Knowledge in Buckalden in the 1890s, but the fundamental argument, I think, is the same. So on that note, I thank everyone for coming. I would like to record my thanks in my office to Stephen Midas and to Andrew Moore for having the IT for tonight go off without any troubles. I rode them very hard this week in paranoia. And Tom McMahon in Andrew's office, who was no doubt bearing the same paranoia from Andrew. But on that note, if you are from the West, please join Westside Labour, like Westside Labour, we're trying to create more opportunities for people to get involved in the West. If you're in Canberra, you've got a great MP. If you're out in the netherworlds of cyberspace, I hope you're wearing pants. Enjoy the rest of your night. Thank you for coming.